Roll call, looks like we have everybody here tonight. So welcome everybody. Addition to the agenda. I don't believe we have any-
There are none.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second. So I got a motion from Cheryl and a- I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing not all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Anybody here for a public comment? Okay. Uh, consistent agenda, we have items A, B, C, and D. Matt, you want to elaborate on any of them?
Sure, so minutes from October 23rd is the regular October meeting. October 29th was the facility committee meeting. Treasurers report. Cheryl, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, just that repairs are going on in those rooms that are going to be for this new CNA program. And more equipments coming in for the maker spaces. And water testing is still ongoing.
It is.
Piece at a time. Other than that, everything was pretty much normal.
Personnel items, we have a resignation from paraprofessional. And then a long-term sub for a maternity leave. And then the winter extracurricular assignments are also included. And then we also did have three donations. One from Bayerbilt, Painesville Masonic Lodge, and Yarman Ford. Any questions on any of that?
Motion to approve the addition to the agenda. So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing not all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Communication item, superintendent. Matt?
I've got just two quick items for you. First of all, it should be three quick items. Those of you that are- that are still remaining on the board, so those that weren't up for reelection and didn't run, those that are remaining, we did get you registered for the winter leadership conference. And so that's all taken care of. I would just ask that if something changes with plans, I know life happens and stuff, so if something happens and you can't attend that leadership conference, you let myself or Linda know so she can take care of the appropriate arrangements. Second item, we are starting some beginning planning for 1920. So there's been some conversations at the high school briefly about 1920. There's gonna be some department meetings and things, so the conversations are beginning for what 1920 is going to look like. I know it's early and it's only in November, but it is time to start looking ahead and getting ready for the next school year as well. So that planning process is getting going. We will do some preliminary stuff with departments and stuff at the high school prior to Christmas break, but then when we come back in January after that holiday break, we will pick up some steam and get going with some more district-wide activities. Then the last item, I just want the board to be aware, I am planning on starting to do some business and industry visits, and so I'm going to be out at a couple places tomorrow with the plan that I hope to continue to be able to visit some more. I think as we kind of continue this conversation about career and tech ed and what that all looks like and how we take and apply what our needs are and what our students are asking for to a high school setting, I just think it's also important for me to maybe have a broader understanding of exactly what's going on out in industry as well. My hope is obviously that it'll be a learning experience for myself, but then I think the other piece to it is, I'm hopeful that we could actually develop some partners where we would have some professional development for teachers and staff that could potentially happen in some of those industries as well. So those are beginning. Like I said, I'm hitting a couple of area businesses tomorrow and hoping that'll continue here for the next three or four weeks as we lead up to and after Thanksgiving break. So, questions for me?
I like the idea of getting all these businesses working together is the only way it works and all of us see those businesses a fair amount. But the kingpin is out there to kind of greet them. I think it's not gonna hurt anything. I think it'll work out good.
Your words, not mine. And I think, and I know I've heard some comments from individuals about wanting to have me out and stuff, and I think, from my perspective, I think it was helpful for me to learn a little bit about them and for them to maybe learn a little bit about me. And now that there is somewhat of a relationship established, I think it's the right time.
Absolutely.
And so we'll get going forward with it.
Good. All right. Anything else? Elementary principal, David Orland.
Good evening. I'll have a couple of high school, middle school things on here also. So last night, we had our- we have the Painesville Cares. It's a part of the youth mental health first aid grant that we received. We had a community meeting last night and had a few community members there. We had one of our student reps there and just had some great roundtable discussions about mental health issues and things that are putting stress on students and adults. And it was just a really nice way to get started. Part of the grant that we have, four of us will be trained in January to go around to different schools and communities to teach the eight-hour youth mental health first aid course. So we're excited about that. And we'll continue to offer community meetings and support where we can. And so I think last night was a good start. November 21st, we have a speaker coming in during our in-service to speak to all of the pre-K-12 staff, and that'll be at the auditorium. And the keynote will be talking about poverty and giving us some insights and some things to think about as we work with low-income families and families in need and how we can best support them in our community. And we are at the elementary really excited about the football team making it to US Bank. We are gonna do the same thing we did last year, is we'll have all of the elementary students out on the sidewalk when they drive by at about 9:20. And so we appreciate being able to do that at the high school. We have a pep fest planned for 8:45, and that'd be about 15 or 20 minutes for the 612 students. And then they will load up the bus and have an opportunity to see the bus off, and there'll be different areas around town that community members will be able to see that too. Any questions for me?
Can we come to that meeting on the 21st?
Yes.
What time?
It starts at 8 o'clock, and it'll go until about 3:15.
How's the playground coming?
Playground is, we are finished. I should've given you an update. We have, all of the new equipment is in. The concrete pad with the rubberized surface on it, we'll have to wait until spring, but we did get all the equipment in. And all of the, that big pile of mulch is gone. We had a lot of volunteers come in and help us, and we just really appreciate all the help that we got. So it's up and running, and we'll continue to fundraise, we'll continue to look at ways that we can add onto that. And I've been working with Matt Dickhausen, he's got some ideas, and we wanna just keep expanding that. We have a lot of land out there, and we wanna use it the best we can, so.
It's looking good out there.
Thanks. Thanks.
All right. Activity with the students, Max Monchar. Activity with Max Monchar.
Well, we're already into the second quarter of school, so it's flying by. As far as the school day operations, we made that one adjustment to the second choice breakfast and the advisor time, and otherwise I think kids are getting real used to what's going on. Junior high girls' basketball and girls' hockey are already playing games. Boys' hockey, girls' basketball, and gymnastics practice started on Monday. Next Monday, boys' basketball and wrestling. So we're into the mode of winter sports already. One thing I do want to mention, this fall, the volleyball team set a school record with 19 wins, so that was one thing of note. And unless anybody has any questions for me, I have to go to open the auditorium for a boys' hockey parent meeting, so. All right?
Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks, Max.
Buildings and drones supervisor, Donny Mayer.
Well, I was up on the roof today, and Horizon Roofing was up there and was one below, and they were working. Felt kinda sorry for them, but they're slowly getting done.
Did you stay out there with them?
No. They are probably gonna get up Thursday, they'll get up on the auditorium and take care of that section, but they're working all the lower sections because it was kinda windy up there, they said, so. But, you know, we got, the flooring is done in 103, 105. I don't know if you guys had seen it yet, but it looks pretty sharp. The vinyl flooring went down well.
Could we maybe see that after the meeting?
Probably, yeah. As you know, the heating season's going well. There's heat in here today yet anyway, so. It's actually gone real well this year so far. We've had a few rooms that were real hot, but got that settled down. We do have one boiler that has a leak in the tube again, but that's to be expected in elementary schools, so. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else. Just some questions for you.
Thanks, Donny.
Okay, miller reports, I think we have three left on the C. Rick, who are your opinions?
Schools were actually in education, we had a regional meeting a couple weeks ago, and state meeting this Friday. The big difference between those two meetings is that we had the election, and so at the regional meeting, there was a lot of question about, depending on the time of the election, what direction we're gonna go. Now, that's settled, it'll be interesting with the state meeting on Friday to see what C is looking at. They did kind of share some of their agenda points, I'll just share just a few of them with you, what they're looking at, their platform, that they're taking to the legislature. Kind of a, I think this is kind of overarching theme, is that a ZFO should not dictate educational opportunity. In other words, where you live in state and in the social, it depends on what education you get. All public school children must have equal access to a high quality education regardless of where they live in the SOA. They talked about increasing state aid in low-poverty wealth school districts for local school operating and building bond levies. Increasing the basic formula by a minimum of $250 per pupil in each of the next two years. Increase the state share of special education funding and reexamine the new special education funding formula. This is one that's gonna be interesting, there's a couple superintendents that have been pushing this for the last couple of years, was creating a constitutional dedicated revenue stream by increasing the sales tax by 1% and reserving resulting revenue for E12 public education. That's interesting. How far that's ever gonna get, I don't know, and there's a lot of questions about, well, they do designate 1% of the sales tax to schools, or they're just gonna take it away from us on the other end? Definitely so. The idea, of course, is different. Increase access to career and technical education, providing more funding and encouraging local business partnership, which we are certainly doing. I feel good about that. Common sense policy relief reform, talking to our legislatures about unfunded mandates must be avoided. Number of other things here. Eliminate the school levy ballot language by voting yes on the ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase, which is not necessarily true, but it has to be on there right now. Talk about getting rid of that. Find a legislative solution allows high school teachers teaching concurrent enrollment courses to continue to do so after the higher learning commission courses, the requirements teachers have to do in college credits. The content here, that's what we're gonna do. Some input on us. Eliminate unnecessary student tests that provide no ethical value for students for education or instruction with staff. So a lot of things on the agenda. I do wanna mention, especially to those who've been elected, every year, C has several days at the Capitol. I got sick, didn't go this last March, but the year before that, Randy was there, I was there, we had about 10 from our school district there. But what they do is they rather have everybody come at once, they divide it up into maybe about six different school districts, and you go down and spend about half a day down there, and they line up interviews with your legislators and others, and it's an excellent opportunity. So they don't have the dates yet, but as soon as they do, we'll get those out. It'd also be an opportunity for students in our school to go down and see what's happening in our legislature, and school board members and other community members to go down and spend the day at the Capitol and get a really good overview of what's happening. And it also gives us an opportunity to do some lobbying on some of these issues. And then lastly, I'm just gonna bring this up, even though I'm not proposing this, but when we're at Kimball, I pulled this out, I don't know what they do with it, it looks like they mail it out, I don't know, but they've got wonderful PR beats that they put out. I know Bruce keeps on about how we need to chew our horn. And they're doing a good job at Kimball with this, and it just reminds me again that what are we doing at Painesville to let our community know the great things that are happening here at the high school? I'd like to see sometime, maybe just a, maybe a one-time subcommittee get together and just talk about PR, how we get our community, get this knowledge out to our community. I thought of a great way of doing it, but it's a little late, but Saturday, there'll be, what, a couple hundred senior citizens here in our school building? And it would be a great time to have something to hand out to them, to take home. Or a police manager, the bank would allow us, would publicize the things that we're doing, to get that word out somehow. So I think we need to be thinking that, especially in terms of if we're gonna do a body issue coming up. Long before that body issue, we need to start getting some word out to our community of what is happening. So that's all I have.
Thank you. West Central District, Lou. We met last night in Sock Center. And they went over the audit. The audit, Chris Hall, TBA, was introduced to the board and superintendent. And after going over the audit, the two players were in very good shape, plus some good judges. And then we went over first, union policies, and they go over them with disapproval. And the main thing we talked about was the superintendent from Melrose, he had showed us some diagrams of a proposal for Melrose Beacon and ALC, a new building. But it won't be a new building, it could be a remodel building or an addition. So he went over that with us, and there isn't really much to say about it, other than Phase One, remodeling would be a $1.15 million project, and if they were to add an addition, I believe that would be about $4.5 million. And this looks like it's gonna happen, I'll point it out, many years of talking about it. And that's about all.
Where does that funding come from, Lou?
Well-
For the building?
Yep, so I can talk just a little bit about it, but the-
He was looking into-
Yep, so it's an interesting issue because West Central Ed is an education district, it's not an independent school district. And so there are some restrictions as far as what they can actually do with owning and operating. And then to add another piece into the equation that makes it even one step more complicated is, they're dealing with a building over in Melrose that is owned by Melrose Independent School District. And so it just makes, it puts another level of complexity onto it. So the Phase One, initially what Melrose is looking at is using some lease levy authority in order to be able to get that Phase One completed. Then that lease levy authority would then be shared amongst the school districts through West Central Ed's billing procedures and stuff. The expansion, where they would actually be adding square footage in order to accommodate having Beacon and ALC in all of West Central Ed under one roof, that's a more complex issue, and that gets to a point where it goes beyond or extends beyond what Melrose's lease levy authority is. And so that one out there is yet to be determined, exactly how that could actually be taken care of. So it's just the complexity of having these four-member districts come together to have an organization called West Central Ed, and then how does West Central Ed actually go about having these programs and housing them in buildings that are owned by independent school districts? It makes it an interesting jigsaw puzzle to be able to figure out exactly how you can go about meeting your building needs and stuff. But the first step would be what Lou's talking about there with Phase One, and would really be looking at taking the existing building, doing some remodeling to it to accommodate and be able to office all the West Central Ed staff. Right now, a lot of them are office out of Sock Center, but Sock Center is going to be needing the space right now that they are leasing to West Central Ed, and so that was, is kind of precipitating this conversation, or speeding the conversation up a little bit from maybe what it's been over the last couple of years. Questions?
The common students, you know what I mean? You've got the staff, I know sometimes they, then they, I'm trying to recall Lou, but sometimes I think they have one or two up here and there, and it's a little more personalized, but-
And Lou, you can correct me if you hear a wrong number, but right now, I believe the ALC enrollment is somewhere around that 35 to 38 number.
Yeah, it goes up and down now. Just today, we added another one from Painesville. We started off with three, and I think we've got eight there.
So there is some fluidity to it.
All three of you are changing.
So the ALC is the largest program, though. It has the largest student enrollment, and then Beacon has fewer students. And then the other issue too, that there was some time that was discussed last night about this, is there are some other programs, whether it be like a studying for special education program or something, that individual districts have one or two students that potentially would benefit from a program like that. But right now, West Central Ed isn't offering that and doesn't really have the current space to kind of figure that out. So there would be obviously some other benefits if they could go through with this, getting everyone under one roof and be able to streamline kind of delivery methods. But if you're asking me what exactly is the total enrollment at West Central Ed right now, I don't know that off the top of my head.
In fact, today, in fact, they have a place in Starbucks, too, and now we have a student ward, and God knows what we don't have one this year.
It appears not to be something where you're gonna take the total cost of whatever this building's gonna cost and divide it by the number of people that go there. You tend to write that cost off as a process, not?
Well, I think what we're talking about is generally, students that have higher level of needs are what are enrolling there, and so obviously, the higher and more needs a student has, the more it will cost and the more resources it will take to be able to meet those needs. So yeah, if you're trying to, you know, get a ballpark of a cost per student and all of that, I think whether it be the West Central Ed district or any special education service cooperative or an intermediate school district down in the metro area, none of those would be good places to compare against because of the programs they're delivering are high-cost programs, is the reality of it.
Do they have to be housed where it's totally legal for students to go?
Oh, absolutely.
It's not being just somewhere.
Right, absolutely. It's the exact same standards and stuff as any other school building would have. Absolutely. So there will be more conversation as we continue, and you know, Melrose is obviously working on trying to come up with some options and alternatives and stuff, and so we'll see. I think they scheduled a December work session.
Yeah, December 10th.
December 10th work session, and then I know come New Year, there will be more conversation with this.
Would they ever come here?
They do, they rotate to the four members.
Now, he's talking about the meeting hall, doesn't he, or all meetings?
Yeah, well, certainly, like, that's gonna be built, or you're gonna remodel, so it's gonna be something we look at.
That is an interesting question, because that is one thing that I have already asked Lori Feebig, who's the director of the service cooper- of West Central Ed district. I have already asked that question, and she is open to explore any facilities.
Good conversation. CTE advisory group.
Um, I'm guessing that on that one.
I'll start, and you can piggyback on it, okay? So CTE advisory group met, I believe it was on the 7th of November. We had a really good meeting, actually. It was, you know, we talked a little bit about career pathways and kind of what that looks like, had a good conversation about internship apprenticeships as well. That group is energetic, and it's one of these things that, you know, I go to that group, we've been meeting once a month, and you walk out of there and you've got a certain energy. And so it's a great thing right now, and it's good to be able to continue to work with that group and capitalize on that energy. You know, I think there's a consensus in the room that the overall, I think the committee is excited about kind of what the school's talking about and where we're going, whether it's looking at, you know, on-the-job training, work skills, work-based learning programming, whether it's the internship or apprenticeship grant that we're pairing with NLS and BBE on, or the CNA program that we're pairing with ACGC and Eden Valley Watkins. There's just a whole bunch of moving parts in there that I leave those meetings and I'm energized by it, and so I think it's been a good thing up to this point. And Bruce, maybe there's something else?
Well, and for me, I didn't think it was actually a committee, I thought we were just getting together.
Okay.
So-
There you go.
But it's always been interesting, 'cause we have lots of people representing, and I think Matt said it perfectly, the energy there is unbelievable. It's very enjoyable, truly, because it isn't just the people in the school. Everybody's interested. So very, 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 very good. I just, again, it was classification, I guess. I didn't-
I put it on there to stump you.
It really wasn't a fun one, really, because I- Bruce? I'm crying now, too. Well, thanks for the input, Bruce. Okay, let's go to old businesses. District goals.
There are a couple things on there that are new, I just wanted to highlight. These are things we're working on, so again, it's not anything brand-new that people are seeing, but the district shared business management is gonna be an agenda item tonight, so we'll talk more about that. If that is something that is approved, then that would obviously slide over to the implementing column on our monthly review here. And then the other one that I just want to get up there and get in front of the board is career pathways. This is going to be a focal point of our planning for 1920 at the high school. This is also a big chunk of what that CTE advisory group has been working on. So you're going to start seeing information about career pathways, what that would look like potentially at Painesville Secondary School, and how really those career pathways could really guide a lot of decision-making as we move forward. So just kind of a heads-up, it's coming, and as we get going in the planning for next year, career pathways is going to be a big component to that, and how career pathways fit into CTE instruction, but also how career pathways fit into college and career readiness. It's coming. Questions at all for me? And then can I just mention it too, as far as district goals are concerned? I know I've mentioned this in the past, but the intent here is, come January, the new board is going to sit down, and one of their first tasks is going to be redoing and recalibrating our strategic plan and our district goals.
We'll move on to new business. Audit report. On here. Hello?
Um, I have some booklets to hand out.
I'm gonna have the PowerPoint up here, so do you want, would you guys mind telling me around there?
And, or the booklets are gonna be the same ones.
The booklets will- Now, I guess if you have an option, you can stay right there if you would like.
Okay. Both of the FTEs. So, two booklets. So, two booklets, we just will pass them down, and Matt can maybe keep some extras. And then, Matt, I do have some extra printed copies.
Okay.
Do you want to use these?
Lydia will take those.
So, I know a couple of the... And am I okay just right here, or do you want me to...
Would you mind sitting by the mic?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm a little hard to hear, so... Okay, so, my name is Molly Thompson, and I'm a partner with Schlatter Winner &amp; Company, and I'm here to present the June 30th, 2018 financial statements and related reports. Ryan Schmidt with our office met in detail with Matt and worked through things in detail, so I'm going to do pretty high level. But if we have any questions as I go through it, just somehow we can change back to make the cover that I go through. So, essentially, what we're going to go through in this booklet and on the screen summarizes the audit, so it takes 100 and some pages and puts it in about 10.
Did I miss it? Do we have the 110 pages that we come and get somewhere?
I just handed them...
But not tonight.
Yeah.
Because I've always gone through pretty aggressively, but I have one for a year or one for the last six that we need to do.
Very fine.
I'm one that likes to look at the numbers and where we're trending and stuff.
And if you want that in an electronic format, we did send it in electronic format.
Did I miss it or something?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so, this first page, this basically is just a picture of how an audit works. So, essentially, we come in and we look at, after we plan the audit, we look at your records, we do a bunch of inquiry, we put together some analytical procedures, detailed testing, confirmations, we read all of your minutes, we do a whole bunch of legal compliance testing, and then we issue an opinion. And we are expressing an unmodified or a clean opinion on the district financial statements that they are fairly presented. So, it's a nice clean opinion that you're looking for. As part of the audit process, we also issue a separate report to the members of governance, which is yourselves. That is in a separate smaller book, and that's actually our opportunity as the auditor to let you know if we have any concerns or issues that we came across in the audit. So, this first page covers accounting policies, unusual transactions, alternative accounting treatments, and we have no concerns in those areas. We do have some significant estimates related to your financial statements, which are listed here, which is basically amounts due from MDE, and then your net pension and net OPEB liabilities and related balances. And then, we did have one new accounting standard that the district adopted this year, also related to OPEB liabilities and related balances.
So, the pension liability, the pension assigned goes by state of Minnesota. Did it increase this year again?
It was not good again this year, so...
How much did we get assigned? Because we're at about $6 million, I thought.
Yeah.
And our whole budget here is $10 million.
Yes.
And they're dumping all that pension on top of our district.
And keep in mind, that only impacts your government-wide financial statements, so on the fund basis, the numbers that Joan's keeping track of for you, those numbers are not in there, because they're only in the...
Exactly. Really is a debt. It's sitting on our financial statement.
It is a debt.
So, someday, somebody will want the money back.
Well, it's...
Where is it going to come from?
It's going to come from if the state doesn't fail to take care of it. That's what it's going to do.
Because we're not going to be the only district.
No, and statewide.
People either be aware of it. So, how much did we get assigned this year?
Right now, at the end of this year, your pension number is 3.4 million plus 19 million, and your OPEB is 1.5. Yeah, they're big, big numbers. And again...
And we operate the school on $10 million a year.
Exactly.
And our debt rate now is almost double that, that will be assigned in pension by recent...
Correct. Yep.
Oh, my goodness sakes.
Yeah, yep, yep. And part of that is based on investment results. There's a lot of estimates into it. It's an actuarial study, so...
If it's half, if it's twice as much as it's supposed to be, it's still really ugly.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But this is still not enough to do. This has been assigned to us.
Exactly. And this was a change in the accounting standards just like two or three years ago. Prior to that, those numbers were never reflected on your financial statements.
Yeah. So, where the school, if you have that in your personal budget, we'd all be broke.
Yes, yep, and you're right in there with cities and townships and everybody else.
Every governance body is in the same hole.
Exactly, yep, exactly. And there's now about 12 pages of footnotes to tell you all about.
I want to read them both.
If you can't sleep tonight...
I suppose you're sleeping in a ulcer. I have to deal with that one.
Exactly.
Someone will want that money back. And ultimately, it might be assigned to the school, because someday, the board that we have may have to go to the taxpayers to start collecting that money back, and that is a very ugly thing.
Yeah.
Well, I think the bigger picture, too, though, is, I think there would be, I'm not going to say it's impossible, but I think it would be hard-stretched to say that ISD 741, you have to pay this back...
Right.
...without including the other 331 school districts in the state. And so, I think it's a little...
But that's our total.
No, I understand that, but every district has their own total.
Has their own total.
And so, I think it would be a tough sell...
Yes.
...for all independent school districts in the state to all of a sudden go to their voters to collect their OPEB debt that has been randomly assigned because they were unhappy with how the pension was set up and a legislative solution was to reshuffle the burden. I just think...
That's exactly what's happened here.
But I just think we need to put it all in perspective as far as what is the likelihood that we're going to be going to our voters in the next five years to claim our pension debt? I don't think it's very good. However, it does have to be reported on paper.
Yeah, that's really up to them.
Yes, yes, you are absolutely right. So, moving on, we also report to you if we came across any issues during the audit, difficulties, disagreements, consultations with other auditors and the like, and we are happy to report that we have done and have a very positive working relationship with your management and personnel. And then, we go into the internal control findings, so these are findings related to the checks and balances within the district. And if we flip to the next page, we have a material weakness for audit adjustments. So, each year, we essentially assist with the cash to accrual entries that are required in order to get things in proper order for these numbers, some of which we just talked about. So, those result in material audit adjustments. They're typical year-to-year, nothing unusual in those areas that causes us to be concerned about your day-to-day. We also have what we call an improper segregation of duties, and again, this is nothing unusual for a district your size. We're just required to let you know that every year. So, you have good controls in place, you just don't have enough employees to spread it out the way it would be in a perfect scenario. And then, lastly, we are required to let you know that we do draft the financial statements, so that falls under a significant deficiency, meaning we just need to make you aware of that. Another section of the audit that we go through is the Minnesota Legal Compliance. We test seven different areas: bid laws, public debt, depositories, conflicts of interest, claims and dispersments, TIF, which actually doesn't apply, and miscellaneous provisions. And we had no non-compliance, or no compliance issues that we noted, so a nice clean report there. And then, the last compliance area we look at relates to your student activity accounts. When you look in the big document, the report on that talks about a qualified opinion. The reason for that is we don't have a way to test your cash receipts necessarily, and that's typical of every district. That's how MDE requires the reporting to be. And then, we did have just one compliance finding. There were three accounts that had no activity. So, if you need those, Joan probably knows which three those are, you do, so...
And Joan told me, and I don't have them off the top of my head. I could find them, but I don't.
Yeah, yeah. No, if you need that, we know exactly which three they are in the detail. So, now, on to some numbers. This next slide, this is just a five-year trend of the pupil unit trend analysis. So, the green bars are your 7th through 12th grades, and the red bars are pre-K through 6th. So, it looks like they're trending up in the green area, the 7th to 12th, and down a little bit in the pre-K to 6th. And this all comes right off the MDA's website, so there's a lot, there's a wealth of information on their website. Then, we get into numbers. This slide details your general fund for the past five years and the current year budget. Couple of things to note here, your blue bars are your revenue, the red or brown is your expenditures, and revenues have consistently exceeded your expenditures. You'll also note in 2018, your revenue and expenditure numbers were fairly close to budget. So, this year, your revenues increased about 210,000 over last year, or 2%. Expenditures were at an increase of about 270 or 3%. And then, your budget, your revenues came in over budget, and expenditures came in under budget by about 70,000. So, you have a nice positive year for your general fund.
So, do you know why the revenue or the expenditure came in under budget?
Um, there's actually, if you want to make a note in the financial statement page...
So, these are spreadsheets, right?
Correct, yep, you can write that on those. Yep. Page, bear with me here. Details for the general fund, your revenues and expenses. And it has a current year variance column along with a comparison to the prior year. And your instructional support was up about 120, and every other category of your expenses was under budget. Regular instruction was the biggest, exceptional instruction, actually. So, the net of that instructional support being up about 120, and all of the categories that were under budget, you were, in total, you were under budget about 70,000 budget actual.
So, you know, you thought you had what the increase was. So, we talked a lot about some of the scuffle runs that we have, a more student-direct instruction, where the state kicks in sometimes with a little more money. Is that a better place there?
Oh, boy. In detail, you know, we've got a very detailed Excel spreadsheet that takes all of these balances. We could certainly get you that. Off the top of my head, I dug into the detail to review this long enough ago that I don't recall off the top of my head. But certainly, if you want, if you wanted...
We have an increase in the budget, we have a reduction in expenses, but we also did some things by bringing in some salaries up for our people in the district that all lacked, because we were not paying them, and now our expenses are down in the early months, so it's just...
Yeah, and we do have all the very specific details behind all of those, so we can certainly send that to Matt or Joan for you, definitely.
Molly, have a question.
Sure.
On the fund balance.
Sure.
Can you remind me what recommendations are as far as what we should have for fund balances?
We're actually getting to that on the very next slide. So, and the nice thing to see here on the green on the previous schedule before we move, green is your fund balance, and you can see that that is increasing, so the health of the district is improving. So, this next page, your unassigned, so you've got several categories for your fund balance, and we detail that out on the next sheet. So, this is just referring to your unassigned, and you have a policy in place for the general fund that that should equal 8% of the annual budget, and you can see your pretty much right there over the years. So, now, one thing to keep in mind, your total fund balance for the general fund ended at 3.3 million. So, if we move to the next slide, and this details out for that 3.3 million of fund balance at the end of the year, only 1.8 million of it is unassigned, so the green section. All of these other sections are either non-spendable because they relate to prepaid, they're restricted for various things, or they're committed, or assigned. So, even though you end, your fund balance is growing, you've got a lot of committed dollars out there, so you can't quite look and think you've got the 3 million.
Does also some of the rest of that, is that we get past?
Yep.
We've got those couple million dollars.
Yep.
So, we have 4.8 million.
Correct. That's just unassigned and just sitting there, correct. And then, along with the fund balancing increasing on the next page, you'll see over the five-year trend here, your general fund cash balances have been increasing accordingly. And then, just a quick snap of the remaining governmental funds, so you've got your general fund, which is a big fund, and then you've got food service, community service, and debt service. And again, these have a fund balance that, in total, is $567,000, but all of that is restricted or non-spendable. So, those dollars really are not available except for these specific purposes. And then, on the next page, you'll see the cash trend for these same funds. Debt service relatively flat, and then your community service and food service are, have a nice little increase each year here for the last four years. And then, when we look at, now, this is government-wide, full accrual, includes all assets on a accrual basis, et cetera, for the district. The blue bar are your current assets, so your cash receivables, prepaid, those types of things. And then, the red bars are your capital or non-current, so all of the buildings and infrastructure, your, you know, equipment, things of those nature. And you'll see there's a nice increase each year in the five years here in your total asset numbers, which again tells you that the district is having a healthy growth. And when we get to the next page, the one you won't like are the green bars. So, the blue bars are your current liabilities, so your payables, your PTOs, things of accrued salaries and the like, and then the red bar is your debt, which is going down, and the kind of ugly one is the green bar, which is the net pension liabilities that we already talked about. And another good trend, you'll see on the next page, long-term debt continues to trend downward. You've got two bombs out there yet, your 2003A debt and 2013A and the 2014A. And then, on this very last page, this is just a nice little comparison, and again, this information comes from the MDA website. It is for 2017, where we've got your district compared to the statewide averages for revenue per student and expenditures and fund balance per student, and then there's also a comparison of '17 to '18 for your district. So, I think, you know, you're right, you're right in the mix with the state numbers. Otherwise, the audit went very well. Again, it was a pleasure working with Matt and Joan, very timely, very accessible, so things went very well for the audit side. Any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to, anybody in the audience have any questions? So, we're going to move to BE, which is...
We do, we do...
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to approve in the audit report.
I suppose we should do that.
Yeah.
So, I got a motion from Heidi.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions?
A lot of discussion. I will be voting aye on this one, I'll tell you right up front, because I can't do that without looking at the numbers. This is just a synopsis of it. I've looked at those numbers every single year. This is just a synopsis of it. I've looked at those numbers every single year, and I'd like to just look at a comparison. So if we're going to decide tonight, I will be voting nay. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify aye. And carry. All right, so we'll move on to B, canvassing the election results. So, Matt?
So item B is a resolution, so it will require a roll call vote. We do need to canvass our results and the election results. The total votes are in the attachment at that link. Obviously, we had four candidates running, and we had four open seats. All of our candidates that were running were elected, so we will need a roll call vote in order to approve the resolution.
I'm going to adopt that resolution.
I have a motion from Cheryl, a second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Here you go, Linda.
Okay. Mark?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, carry. Uh, B, issuance of certificates.
So the, the second election-related resolution has to do with the issuance of certificates of the election and then directing the clerk to finish off the other duties that are required as far as getting oath of office, acceptance of office, and all of those items that we need in order to seat new candidates at our first meeting in January. Again, it's a resolution, so we need a roll call vote.
I made a motion to approve, a second from Mark, and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Here you go, Linda.
Mark?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl? Aye.
All right, sharing business manager, management services.
So there are two attachments that are in the agenda. There's also a document that is at your place. The two attachments would be the contract that would fulfill the shared business management for the rest of the 18-19 school year, beginning January 1. The 19-21 document would be the contract for the shared business manager for those two school years. So this would be a two-and-a-half-year agreement. The document that's in front of you is probably the easiest one to use. This would just simply be the joint agreement that we would, both districts would enter into. It would begin on January 1, 2019. It would run through June 30 of 2021. If you flip the page, at the top of page two, it would have the Painesville share for 18-19, 19-20, and 20-21. The 18-19 obviously is significantly less because it's for half a year, and it's at a 40-60 split, whereas moving July 1 of 2019, it would move to a 50-50 split, and it would be for a full year. The, are there any questions on, on any of that? Okay. The other thing that then would happen is if this is approved this evening, then the, tomorrow I would also send a letter off to BBE that would just say that yes, this is approved, and upon receipt of resignation slash retirement notice, we would then be ready to move forward with finalizing all the logistics and job descriptions and all of those things that have to happen. So that would be the next step for us. Questions?
Just one comment as I looked at it.
Yep.
For us, it's a new hire. For everybody that did this, that sounded a new hire. So some of what we see in that contract is not a new person. Right? The modification days, all that kind of stuff is based on a person that's been with their district for a while. We're going to share on it. It wasn't like we went out for a brand-new hire.
Right. I do not view this as a new hire. What we are doing is entering into an agreement to basically purchase contracted services, is what we are doing. We are not hiring anybody. All of the contracts that are part of this agenda, those would have to be signed by the BBE Board of Education.
And they put this all together where you're sharing it.
Correct. Correct. Yes. Yep. The only reason why this would be an agreement that would have to go through June 30 of 2021 is that is what the two-year agreement for this business manager would be. And so obviously, if at the end of that agreement it's not working out, then BBE would need to rectify that contract in order to, you know, modify it, so recognizing that it's no longer a shared position. So we've talked about this at a couple of other meetings. Obviously, we started, I really thought there were three options to this. It would be rehire with the current structure. It would be potentially look at our own business manager, or it would be a shared business manager. I believe fiscally, this is the decision that makes sense. I also think structurally, and as far as the workload and everything, this is a solution that is absolutely doable and manageable for, for Painesville. So it would be my recommendation that the board approve this joint agreement.
Second. I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions?
Well, I just wanted.
Go ahead.
I think it's a great idea, but we are, you're convinced, Matt, that we can get all the work done that we have here with this proposal.
Yes. I wouldn't be bringing it to you if I, if I thought that was, was not going to happen. Yes.
And again, this is to fill a gap of someone who is retiring.
Correct. This, this is an individual that is retiring, and so it's, yes, there's a, we have a position to fill.
We have a need. It's not something new.
Correct.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify aye. And carry. Uh, T, Board of Education's steward representative.
Uh, this is, I'm asking for the board just to basically give me permission to start this. We talked about it last month. I would like to have a student rep. In my personal opinion, we would probably have two. It'd be great if we had a junior and a senior. Students are busy. They have things going on, on Tuesday evenings. And so I would like to identify two student reps that would come and participate, sit on the board. They would be a non-voting member. Other school districts are actively doing this. I think they bring a perspective that we, we need to have a voice. And so I'm just asking for the board to give me permission to go ahead and, and get things moving. There's no attachment or anything that.
And they would have voice.
They would have voice, they won't have vote.
I got a motion from. I was like, what's your name? You know, I've been gone for like two meetings. So I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Lou. Any other further discussions?
Um, I just, I was at the meeting last night, and the way they chose the student representatives for Painesville cares was an application process put out to the students. The students came forward, had to fill out the application, be interviewed, and get chosen. And I think that would be a great way to find these people, if that's what the administration thinks would work. I thought it was wonderful, and the rep that was there at the meeting was a very nice person.
Excellent.
Just a suggestion.
Yep.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify aye. And carry. Number F, Lamb Labor Services.
I am asking that the school district can utilize the services of Lamb Labor Services when we are unable to fulfill positions. We are running into this right now. I forget how many times we have posted custodial positions, whether they be part-time, full-time, long-term sub, short-term sub. It is a difficult market to find employees right now. And I don't think there's, you know, go around town, the number of help-wanted signs that are out. I think everyone's kind of in the same boat. So Donnie and I did meet with Len Gilmore and talked at length, kind of what, what potentially he could offer. Again, this would be a last resort, so the district would follow its hiring procedures. We would post, we would advertise, we would do all of those things. All the intention would be, we want to hire our people and employ them. But in the case where we are just coming up and not finding some applicants, I would like to be able to extend that to attempt service or Lamb Labor Services. And so that's what I'm asking with this, and it's my recommendation that you would approve it.
I want a motion. Second. I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. My man, I don't know if you might have discussed this already, but how does that work with the union?
Well, right now, when they initially come on, they are not our employee. So they are, they are.
Right, but I mean, how does it, because it's a labor shop, or a union shop, how does that fit with filling a position, or filling a position for a non-union?
As long as it's something that we have followed our hiring procedures, and we haven't been able to secure any applicants, I'm not concerned about having, having pushback. Now, if we would get into a situation where for some reason, and I don't know what that would be, because I don't necessarily see the reasons why someone would use this if you're, just absolutely can't find someone, if we would have applicants and choose to use attempt service rather than hiring those people on ourselves, that is going to be something that we're going to run into problems with. And that's not what I'm recommending to do. It's a situation where we've posted repeatedly, we have no applicants, we have an opening that's fast approaching. I would like to be able to access attempt service in that case.
I just, my, I'm concerned.
Yep.
All right, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify aye. And carry. Uh, site survey proposal.
Um, what's attached here is a site survey for the secondary school. This is a piece of a potential facility project. The, the surveyors that you're getting this proposal from is O'Malley and Crown out of Cold Spring. In talking with Evan Larson, our architect, one of the things that is going to be a need shortly would be a site survey. It's advantageous for the district to do that site survey before we get into the middle of winter. And so you will see, I actually received this proposal back in August, and I've just kind of been holding on to it with the idea that I wanted to kind of see where this facility conversation progresses and then can bring it forward at a time where I think it's appropriate to go ahead and, and complete the site survey. I think we're to that point. I think we're going to, in the next, you know, month and a half, going to be having some very serious conversations about a potential facility project, and this is going to be valuable information as we move forward. So I think this is the appropriate time to get the surveyors out to be able to do this site survey so that architects and, and other professionals would have as much data as they need. Questions?
I guess, I, I think it's too early. I think we have enough information on this project that has to be analyzed that I'm not a believer in kicking the hand down the road. Well, whether we get it done next month or we get it done in January, isn't going to make a heck of a difference because nothing's going to happen truly until we get closer to having a vote. The committee and all the people that have gotten together, nobody knows all the details yet. Nobody has a price yet. I, I would think that we should table that till mid-December. Because at the end of November, we will have most of the information from Evan to, for people to get a feel for what work was coming.
But isn't this, isn't this information that we will get from this report will help the architects design and keep moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's, there's two components to it. I, I think the biggest piece is, and one of the things right now that, a question for instance, that Evan has posed to me is as far as estimating the amount of fill and stuff like that that they would need. The site survey would give us that data in order for them to get a pretty good estimate. Right now, what they're going to just include in their estimate is what they believe is a good guess. Now, if we're okay with good guesses, and we understand that some of them are high and some of them are low, and that's how we're going to approach the construction estimate, then I would agree. We can hold off and not do the site survey until we want to get actually into the design and development of a project. If we're more concerned about, we want to really get the magnifying glass out and have good quality data to finalize construction estimate, I believe that this is the way to go. So it, you know, but it can be done either way. There, there is nothing that necessarily says you can't do anything or the district is, its tracks are frozen with a facility project if we don't do the site survey now. What we can do is we can gain some additional information to hopefully give us a more precise construction estimate. Now, do we need that precise of a construction estimate? It all depends on who you ask.
Let me make a motion that we go ahead and approve this. I think for the, for the cost, we may be well ahead by doing. Okay, so I got a motion, a table by Lou, and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Here you go, none. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify aye.
Aye.
And carry. Just a little back, Bruce with the other one. Uh, scheduling upcoming meeting, propose meeting.
So our policy group, Bruce, Cheryl, and Rick, right? Did I get that right?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm wondering if we could get together the week of November 26. Wednesday and Thursday, the 28th and 29th are completely open for me. Can we do the 28th? Can we do a, like a 1 o'clock?
Works for me.
1 o'clock on November 28th. That'll be at the district office.
Okay, so anything else? Well, about Monday, now you've talked, you mentioned about Monday.
Yeah, I don't have any, enough information yet on.
No, I don't need that. We have a scheduled meeting Monday, don't we? Monday night? What is that?
The last time that facility, the large facility meeting met, the plan was to go the 19th.
Yep.
But now 19th is a conflict, and so I'm thinking that the plan would be to move that to November 26. But I need to do just a couple more things. I will send an email out to everybody regarding that facility committee thing. Okay?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I got a motion from Lou, and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Here you go, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify aye. And carry. And I'm going to sit with you here just for two minutes. And done.